You figured it out, you gotta go to A1.
Yeah, well, that's just it. That's just it.
How they doing? How are you?
Cool.
Yes, sir. Yep. Soon as I can get it.
What kind of changes there was?
Yeah.
People have moved in.
Yep. I got it down at Senior Center.
He'll have to the, uh, booster.
I didn't have any issues.
No.
Well, I had like, that day was fine at night when I went to bed. I was fine. I woke up the next day and I was, my muscles were sore. So for like half a day.
All over or just the arm?
All over. All over, my fingers, my fingertips, my toes. And by like five o'clock that night, I was back to normal. Yeah. I didn't have an issue with it.
Uh, before we start the meeting, I'd like to have a motion to have, uh, Tom be appointed as the, uh, chairman for tonight's meeting. As, uh, Chairman Davis is unavailable tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call. Mr. Diaddio.
Yes.
Mr. Allegra.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Generis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Marr.
Yes.
Mr. Ty.
Yes.
Okay.
Take it away.
Uh, we have to do, um, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here we go.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the Republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Uh, Secretary, is this, uh, meeting been approved or redeveloped?
Yes, Chairman, it has. Mr. Diaddio.
Here.
Mr. Allegra.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Generis.
Present.
Mr. McEnone. Councilwoman Marr.
Here.
Ms. Ochenge. Ms. Patel. Ms. Palowski. Mr. Ty.
Here.
Chairman Davis. Uh, Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Alfari.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Moralization of resolutions?
This evening, we have quality wine, spirit, site plan, nineteen eighty-four Route thirty-five, South Amboy, New Jersey. Borough of Saro Block four, twenty-four Lot three. We need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
So Chairman, I make a motion that the resolution be approved on roll call vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call will be, uh, Mr. Diaddio.
Yes.
Mr. Allegra.
Yes.
And Mr. Generis.
Yes.
Okay.
For Donald Parker LLC, site plan, four thousand, we're down at the Saro, New Jersey, block fourteen, Lot one. Need a motion?
So Chairman, I make a motion that the resolution be approved on roll call vote.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and, um...
All in favor?
Roll call would be Mr. Diaddio. Mr. Allegra.
Yes.
Mr. Generis.
Yes.
Okay.
Need a motion to accept the minutes from October twentieth?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have November thir-
I need a motion to approve the November third meeting.
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By sound, all right, no communication agenda?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a site, site plan subdivision hearing for Hercules LLC, site plan, plant entrance improvement, lot forty-three, Lot one, Cheesecake is the cabinet.
Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith. I'm an attorney at Gibbons PC, and I am here tonight on behalf of Hercules LLC. Hercules is the owner of all of the property within the Hercules redevelopment area, which is subject to the Hercules redevelopment plan. This evening, we are here specifically seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for what is known in the plan as Section Four. Section Four is the existing plant. The plant remains operational. It's been here for, I believe, over a hundred years. And this application tonight is actually a result of another application that was recently approved by this board. If you recall, back in August, uh, the contract purchaser for what is known as Section One of the Hercules redevelopment area, approve, uh, came before the board seeking approval for three warehouses. As part of that application, which was approved, they also proposed a new interior roadway system with an access point off of Cheesequake and South Minnesick Road. With that approval and with construction of that project hopefully moving forward soon, it actually impacts the existing plant driveway for the Hercules plant. Instead of accessing directly from Cheesequake and South Minnesick, it will now have a plant entrance that will tie in to the new roadway system that's part of the approved warehouse development. So it's a pretty simple application tonight. There are no new buildings proposed. In fact, we're removing a security shed that is a sturdy building that is on the property. And we're seeking to reconfigure the internal driveway system at the plant so that it links up with the new proposed development rather than exiting directly to the street. We are, as I said, seeking site plan approval as well as three design exceptions, one related to illumination at the shared property line, uh, one related to the height of the light fixtures within the site, and one related to a sidewalk between a truck parking area and the security check-in booth. We have two witnesses this evening. Our primary witness will be Bob Curley from Colliers Engineering, who is our site civil engineer and also professional planner. He'll be doing most of the heavy lifting this evening. We also have John Metz, the project engineer from Hercules, who's here to answer a few very specific questions that were raised, uh, in your professionals' reports. We have provided notice of this hearing both by mail and in the newspaper and provided an affidavit to the board secretary and board attorney in advance of the hearing.
I reviewed the notice and it's acceptable.
Excellent. So with that, I'd like to call up Mr. Curley to begin our presentation.
Uh, can you please state your, or do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Curley, C-U-R-L-E-Y.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Um, I've been practicing engineering for over thirty years. I've been the planning board engineer for Brick Township, uh, for seven years. I was the alternate planning board engineer.
So Chairman, I make a motion to accept his credentials.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for clarification in the record, we are offering Mr. Curley this evening both in the field of civil engineering and as a professional planner. Mr. Curley, if you could just begin by orienting the board to the location of the property and also to, I guess, the, the prior approval that necessitated our appearance here this evening.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, this is an, this is a, uh, exhibit that was utilized in the, um, Arsenal Trading Center planning board testimony. And I wanted to use this exhibit so that everyone can understand that this is something that you've already approved and the location of-
Let's mark it as A1.
Certainly.
What's the date?
July twenty-first?
July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
And it's a color rendering?
Yes, this is a color rendering of the, uh, layout, overall layout for the Phase One of the Arsenal Trading Center.
Thank you.
Um, to orient everyone, Cheesequake Road is located along the right side of the exhibit. The intersection of, um, Minnesick is at the north end of the property. North is, uh, pretty much straight up on this exhibit. And the location of the main entrance driveway, uh, for the site would be, uh, at this location, approximately midway on Cheesequake Road. To enter the project that will be ultimately getting into the, um, uh, Ashland proper plant would be to come down this driveway, make a turn, and then come into an area that is ultimately going to be secured with some fencing, and you would check in at the, at the gatehouse and, um, then proceed into the plant and for the, uh, for the personnel that would be bringing deliveries to the plant.
Mr. Curley, everything shown on Exhibit A1 in the bold color, that's what was previously approved by this board in connection with the prior application, correct?
That's correct. So the, again, the area in question is at the bottom portion of the exhibit, and what I didn't want to do is I, I wanted to utilize this exhibit as, as what was previously testified to. I do have another, another reduced size exhibit that shows the layout of what we're proposing, basically, and it's, it's a reduced size. I can pass it out to, if the board sees.
We'll mark the handout here.
I have four copies of that.
As Exhibit A2.
A2.
Which will be the reduced size. Mr. Curley, can you indicate what's different about A2 as opposed to A1?
Yes. What A2 depicts is, um, is our proposed construction, which is located at the bottom of the exhibit, and it's, uh, highlighted in black. And it's just the, it's the overall layout of the, what we're proposing for the driveway and the new parking area.
I imagine the next exhibit is a much larger blow-up of that area, correct?
That's correct. So currently, the site accesses, um, Cheesequake Road, cuts through, um, it's a probably, it's about a third of a mile off of Cheesequake Road down, down to, into where the guard center is right now, and then there's a security gate. And currently, if you're a visitor coming to the site, or if you're doing a delivery, you have to stop at the security gate, you have to check in, and then the security guard opens up the gate, and then you can come into the plant, do the deliveries, or visit whoever you're going to be visiting with. So what has to happen is because this entrance area is being reconfigured with the new development, we've, we proposed our minor site plan or site plan that we're doing for, for the development, which basically entails some additional parking pavement, um, a new access road that, that goes, and if I can't.
This will be A3?
So A3 would be the dimensioning plans that were, dimensioning plan sheet number three, three of nineteen that was submitted with the planning board application. So again, the area in question for, that abuts the previously approved, uh, arsenal site is right in this area. There is an existing, um, security shed, security trailer that's located in this area, and a small gravel parking area. Again, there's a gate that runs across the driveway, and that'll be, again, removed, uh, and reconfigured with new fencing. And the new fencing will tie into existing fencing that surrounds the employee parking lot, uh, that is just to the north of, uh, our sec, new security office. And will run adjacent to the driveway, uh, turn ninety degrees, and then run adjacent to the, uh, the sidewalk area for the parking, and then tie into the building. From the building, it'll, from the other opposite corner of the building, it'll run, uh, more to the west and tie into the existing fence line that is along the property line. That will, that will provide the security for access into the site. As far as vehicular traffic coming in and out, there'll be two, um, gates that would be automated, and they would be for the in and the out. And then there's an emergency gate that would be a swing gate that would be locked, um, at all times and only used for emergency access purposes only. We're proposing nineteen parking stalls, um, along, along, uh, the, the north portion of the existing, uh, trailer, trailer office area. And if I may, I'll flip this over just so that the board can get a understanding of the existing conditions. And what I'm talking to now is Sheet Two of nineteen. This is the existing conditions slash demolition plan that was submitted with the application.
Mark that as A4.
So what currently exists today, again, what I was speaking to is there's a, there's existing fencing that, that comes across the driveway that has an up, um, electric, um, slide gate on it. And you, you check in at the security trailer, which is located in this area, and then come into the plant. And then if you needed to, um, either go into the plant, you could, you could enter, enter through the existing driveway here, come, come down and around and get back to the plant also. The reason why I wanted to show this to the board is so that you could understand right now there's eleven parking stalls, uh, including one handicap. And this also depicts the areas that we're, uh, doing some tree clearing in order to accommodate the proposed development. So I'll turn back to A3. Again, there would be a fence that would be, a fence with a gate that will secure the area so that, uh, people that would be visiting or, or potential customers that would be visiting into, or, or having a meeting in the office area would have to park in the new employee parking area or new visitor parking area, and then come into the, come into the office. And that's, at that point, they would talk with the security person, and they could utilize the office for, uh, conference, conference purposes and/or, uh, meetings. As far as deliveries would, would go, uh, a truck could come into this, will be coming into the site, come down the driveway, the new configured driveway, and then come up to the, the security gate, stop, get out of the vehicle, come into the security area, talk to the security guard, get checked in, and then proceed into the plant. And typically, it would go straight and then wrap around and get, get to the back of the plant. So, again, this is a pretty, in the grand scheme of things, pretty minor modification to what we're, uh, what we're providing, and it's really to provide a updated, new, secure access for the plant based upon the proposed construction that's being, that's being proposed immediately adjacent to our, to the new property line.
Mr. Curley, along those lines, if you could just very briefly describe what those four long truck parking spaces are in the upper left-hand corner.
So if a, if a truck driver were to come here, come to the site at night, and there was no one present, what they can do is they can come into the site, back into the stall, and they can stay in their truck and make a phone call and call to the back, to the back, uh, back plant. And then the back plant can, and I, I want to make sure, I want to ask, uh, the back plant, then can automatically open the gate from?
Well, yeah, it's more procuring.
If you're gonna testify, we have to-
We can have Mr. Metz answer that question. Well, of course.
So the, the idea of the parking, these four parking stalls is for, if, if a vehicle comes at night and, um, the truck driver can't get access into the plant, the security guard is not, not occupying the, um, security office, he can sit in this vehicle and wait, wait after he makes a phone call to have someone come forward to unlock the, unlock the front security gate. But the truck drivers are not supposed to be leaving their vehicles at all.
So, Mr. Curley, there are three design exceptions that the applicant has requested in connection with the site plan approval. Can you go through each one? Two relate to lighting, and one that each probably start with relates to the lack of, uh, connecting sidewalk between those truck parking areas and the main, uh, security area.
Yes, so the, the ordinance requires, uh, that you only have a half a foot candle of light that spills off of your property. And part of our lighting plan is to illuminate this intersection. So we have a proposed light that's actually on the opposite side of the, uh, driveway that's being reconstructed into the employee parking area. So that sheds some light over in this area. And then we also have another light, another proposed street light, which is located, uh, again, immediately adjacent to the entrance. So it does spread off of our property, but it's in an intersection that's being illuminated, and it's largely to provide adequate light for security and also for the ability for someone to see where they're coming to and coming into the, into the plant if they get there at night.
And what's proposed to be constructed on the other side of that property line?
So along, along this property line, there's a detention, a detention facility, so there's no, there's no buildings, or, excuse me, there's a building, but it's across a drive aisle. There's a detention facility that's along this property line, and, um, again, this is another driveway, uh, coming back into the arsenal site. So it's, it's driveways and a, uh, and a detention facility.
And then, uh, for the second design exception, that relates to the height of the light poles. Can you explain why that is needed?
So there's a, uh, excuse me, currently on site, we have above-ground, uh, above-grade electrical power supply and telecommunications that runs from the back of the plant forward, and then ultimately comes into the security and office area, and also supplies electricity to some other lights that, that go forward. Those are existing lights. Our intention was not to change them. Our intention was just to change out the, uh, the existing Cobra head with the new luminaire so that they be LED and, uh, night sky, uh, night sky designed so that they wouldn't be shedding light upwards.
And under the ordinance, uh, not the redevelopment plan, but the underlying ordinance, a maximum of twenty-five feet is permitted, correct?
That's correct.
And how high will these light poles be?
They're approximately thirty to thirty-five feet existing, and then the, the luminaires down probably about six feet from, from the top of the pole. So it's probably, it's, it's probably close to about thirty feet where it's, where it's being, where the light fixtures located.
And then the last design exception that's being requested has to do with this side, not having a sidewalk, I believe, between those four truck parking areas.
Correct.
Can you explain why no sidewalk is, is necessary there?
So the, again, the, the purpose of these parking stalls is for vehicle waiting area, and no one, if, if, a truck driver, if he, if he arrives on site, again, backs into the parking stall, is not supposed to leave his vehicle. Supposed to stay with his vehicle. So there's really no need to have a pedestrian sidewalk to go to nowhere and not being used by someone who's supposed to be staying with their vehicle.
And when the truck driver is ready to check in, where will the truck pull up?
So the truck would pull up, um, up to the, so the current, currently, there's, we have proposed a gate line in this area. So a truck would pull up, stop, and then get out of his truck, walk into the security area, and then come back out. And then the security guard would open the gate, and then they could proceed into the plant.
And where you were just pointing, there's a crosswalk there, correct, between the truck and where the check-in would be?
That's correct, and that crosswalk crosses the exit driveway, and again, this is a secured exit. So a vehicle would come up to the gate, stop, and then, um, the security guard can look to see who's there and then open the gate.
Now, we received the review letters from both CME and from Mr. Fowler. The review letter from CME is dated December first, two thousand and twenty-one. Have you had a chance to review that letter?
Yes, I have.
There were a handful of items where additional testimony has been requested, and I'd like to just go through those, uh, briefly. Uh, the first one in A3, there is a question about the four-foot-wide paved walkway that ends the curb radius of the access road and what the proposed use of that would be. So can you point that out on the plan and then identify the proposed use?
So currently, and if I may, I'll, I'll flip this over just so that the board can understand.
So you're turning back to A4?
Correct. Again, currently, there's a, there's the existing, um, office, office complex, and then there's a paved area that's located directly behind the office complex. And if, uh, personnel need to come into the office, they're typically driving either a, um, gator, a four-wheel-drive vehicle, or they, um, possibly even a golf cart to be able to come up to the front. They park, park in this paved area and then go into the office. There's two access doors into the office. I'll flip back to flip back to A3, and the area in question is this, uh, we, I have it identified on the plans as a four-foot-wide paved walkway. That terminology probably was inappropriate because really, no one's really walking there. The only access that, that this is utilized for would be for, again, the gators or golf cart. In that vein, we discussed it amongst ourselves, and, um, just to, so that there wouldn't be any issues, um, with the access portion of this, we would like to widen that to a twelve-foot wide path. And then, um, again, the sole purpose is just for access back into the plant for personnel that are coming up to the office area.
So Chairman, we, we raised the comments, and we weren't sure, it, it appeared that you had a walkway going into the middle of the pavement, and that was the concern, having pedestrians walking into the roadway with nowhere else to go after that, no other sidewalk, but if it's just for gators or, or other vehicles, I, I don't know that there's a problem with it. So, and same thing with the width, four-foot wide is probably narrower for a gator or a little golf cart, so if you want to widen it out, I, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna skip down to A11. We're actually gonna have Mr. Metz come up in a moment to address some of the other items in, in Section A.
Excuse me, A4, can you just, A4, just clarify?
Oh, excuse me, so there was a, there was an error on my, um, on the front cover page, and the front cover page indicated that the, uh, office area was twenty, two thousand and twenty-five square feet. It's, it's not, it's thirty-six hundred square feet, and the calculation, if you work out the proposed parking that would be required would be fourteen point four parking stalls. We're providing nineteen parking stalls, so we meet the ordinance requirements. Just the error on the front cover.
Chairman, that's what we thought. We just wanted to clarify. No change in number of spaces. You meet, you, you actually have in excess of what the ordinance requires, even with the revised calculation.
That's correct.
Just while we're there, it, there are a number of items this report, we're going to stipulate at the end, that are technical in nature, and we will be complying. Right now, we're just gonna hit the ones where additional testimony, uh, is needed, so I'm actually gonna skip to A11.
Sorry, could you chart ten also, or is, is Mr. Metz gonna deal with that?
Mr. Metz is gonna talk about solid waste. We brought Mr. Metz to talk about floor plans and solid waste, so that he'll do, um, nine and ten.
So item number eleven indicates the need for any project signage, and what I did was, um, I went out and took photos, and if I may, um, distribute these to the board.
We'll make this A5. And, Mr. Curley, what is A5?
So A5 are, are two, two different photos that I took, um, on Monday, and they are the two they are the two access signs that are along Cheesequake Road on the existing entrance today. Those two signs, they're, they're both the same dimension. They're four foot by eight foot, and they are, uh, seven and a half feet tall. And our, our intention or our, our request would be of the board would be, once that driveway is eliminated, to bring one of those signs- driveway is eliminated, to bring one of those signs to the front entryway where we're relocating our flag poles to. Um, the, the size of the sign meets the ordinance. I believe it's, you're allowed 100 square feet. These are 32 square feet. And we're only proposing one at this area.
And Mr. Curley, the, the required setback for the sign under the redevelopment plan is 25 feet. Will the location near the flag poles be chosen so that it complies with that setback?
Yes, it will.
I'd just like to touch upon a few of the other items in the report from CME. We've already touched upon the, the waivers that we need, which are called out in items D1 and D2, as well as the sidewalk, uh, in section E. If you could just discuss briefly E5, which requested additional testimony with respect to phasing and how this will relate to the project that was previously approved by the board for section one.
So, uh, just for the board's comfort level and so that everyone understands, there's a, there's a weekly conference call that occurs between Ashland and the Arsenal Development Team. And that happens every week so that, so to ensure that the coordination of our proposed construction that abuts their property and what they're phasing and preparing their ultimate utility connections, um, is discussed on, again, on a weekly basis. So from a coordination standpoint, we will be 100% coordinated between both plans. The plans that were provided to the planning board in the, um, in the approved fashion that, that, that the planning board looked at, not through resolution compliance, was a little bit different. The configuration of the Langen plans was a little bit different in this area. I've coordinated our plans subsequent to their planning board submission. And now this will match their plans. So the driveway coming out of the employee parking area and the, these turning radii all match the Langen plans now.
Mr. Chairman, um, how will the, uh, the vehicles on the northwest corner know that it's a waiting area and not, not a parking lot per se? Will there be signage indicators?
In, in this area?
Yes. No, the northwest corner.
Oh, this is employee parking?
No, I'm talking about, um, the waiting area of the trucks.
The truck area?
Yeah. How will they know it's a waiting area?
We can, we can sign that.
And I'm going to have Mr. Metz explain, uh, a little bit in greater detail about the operations.
Because you're citing, you're admitting sidewalks because there's no reason for it because it's a waiting area.
Correct.
Okay, so we should, we should indicate that.
Okay.
I'll have Mr. Metz explain. And before we do that, I am going to have Mr. Metz come up in a moment to talk about items A4, A9, well, I could talk about A4, I guess A9 and A10 of the CME report. Mr. Curley, other than those two items that require further explanation, uh, would you agree that we're, the applicant's stipulating they will comply with the remainder of the items in the CME report?
Yes, we will.
I'd like to just turn briefly to the planning letter that we received from Mr. Fowler, which I believe was also dated, I'm sorry, it's dated November 24th. In that letter, there were comments in section E, and I'd like to just run through those as well. The first comment asks us to provide an overview of the road. I think we've, we've done that. Uh, the second comment asks about circulation for emergency vehicles to access the site and to have appropriate fire suppression system. So can you discuss how emergency vehicles could access the site?
Um, again, emergency vehicle, if it, if it needed to access the site, uh, would have to come into the main entrance. The security guard can see out the window to the main entrance and can let any emergency vehicle through. And then they, they could enter into the plant proper.
Okay.
If, if need be, um, and, and there was the need for fire apparatus to come, come in this area, the gate could be left open during an emergency type situation and/or this gate could be, uh, opened for faster access to the back, back portion of the plant.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curley, then, in the evening when there's no guard, uh, trailer, and people come on site, there's a problem with the issue, the gates are locked, how do they get access?
I can have Mr. Metz address that because it, that's actually also the current situation at the plant. So Mr. Metz can address how it's handled currently and how it will continue.
Thank you.
Okay. So just along those lines, uh, item number four, I believe we've addressed. Item five, the history of this single-story office trailer. So, Mr. Curley, there, there is an existing office trailer that we've now established is about 3,600 square feet on site, correct?
That's correct.
And that, has that site, that trailer, sorry, that modular office been there for a number of years, correct?
That's correct.
What is the use of that building at the moment?
So currently, currently this, the existing building has nine offices, two office cubes and a conference room. And the proposed reconfiguration of the interior of the, of the building is going to have six offices with a security station, two cubes and a larger conference room.
The security officer that used to sit in a separate trailer will now sit inside the main building with, with some of the other administrative staff, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Other than that, is the use of that existing office, modular office changing?
Um, they're adding, they're adding an, an additional bathroom. Right now, there's one ADA bathroom, they're adding an additional bathroom.
Okay. All right. Uh, we're going to ask Mr. Metz to address the storage of trash. That's item A6. Um, A7, there's a question about any known areas of contamination within the project boundary. So for this question, we're going to talk about the area of the driveway, not of the entire 400-acre Hercules site. Have you had a chance to confer with Hercules remediation professionals?
Yes, um, I spoke with Shannon Lloyd, who is the remedial, remedial project manager who oversees all of the LSRP's that are involved with remediation on the site. And he actually provided me with a letter, um, indicating that there are no known, um, areas of concern in, in our disturbance area. And I can supply that letter to the board.
We'll mark that as exhibit A6.
A4 copies.
Okay.
Date of...
December 4th. All right. Item number eight, uh, future plans concerning the Hercules redevelopment plan. So I can give the board just a bit of an update that, as you may recall, when the redevelopment plan was adopted, there were five sections. One section is identified for open space, that's section five. Section four is the plant, which is continuing to operate. Then you had sections one, two, and three. Section one has been before you for site plan approval. Sections two and three have not. As we indicated, as Hercules indicated back when the redevelopment plan was adopted, we are continuing to search for, uh, potential buyers. You know, as of this time, there's nothing yet to present to the board, but it, development, we would anticipate, could proceed exactly as permitted in the redevelopment plan. Uh, but there, at this time, there are no applications that we anticipate that are going to be before you, you know, imminently. Outside agency approval, Mr. Curley, what other outside agency approvals do we need for this application?
We would need, uh, the planning, uh, county planning board and then soil erosion and sediment control approval from, from the municipality. And, um, obviously, planning board approval.
And does this aspect of the project require any DEP approval?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And then the last, uh, item, E10, asks to provide justification for the waiver relief. So we've already talked about each of the three design exceptions in turn. Uh, can you explain how each of the, um, waivers is, is the best alternative for the existing conditions here and how it will not have a detrimental impact on the neighboring properties?
There's, so from the, from a lighting standpoint, um, the project site is located so far interior to, to the site, it really impacts no adjacent uses other than the parking lot for the industrial warehouse. From a security standpoint, we would want to maintain the light levels and the existing lights that, that are on-site today and also the telecommunications, um, that exist, we would like to keep them maintained as they are. So for those reasons, um, I, I believe that, that these variances or waivers can be granted without any detrimental effect to the, uh, ordinance, the land plan, or any adjacent neighbors.
So those are all the questions I have for Mr. Curley. As I indicated before, I'm going to ask Mr. Metz to step forward if the board doesn't have any questions for Mr. Curley.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one simple question. Um, as far as the fence goes, are you proposing any barbed wire on top of the fence?
Um, none that, no barbed wire other than what currently exists, no.
So there's currently barbed wire on your fence?
Yes, there is.
Um, just, I guess that either our attorney or Jay, I know barbed wire is on top of the fence, is, um, requires a variance if it's before the zoning board. And I had this problem with Dupont. I denied the barbed wire, the initial application as chairman of the zoning board, and for some reason they came back and got it under some kind of, um, some kind of ordinance, whatever. I know Jay and I spoke about it a long time ago.
I, I think there were some homeland security issues that were raised.
Homeland security, that's the word I'm looking for.
And that, that was presented to the board and I think it was indicated that you really couldn't control that. There were other outside agencies that had jurisdiction that required that type of protection for the site.
Now, this homeland security, would that apply to this site as well?
Well, I, I let me just understand, there was existing barbed wire. The new fencing you're proposing, is that going to have barbed wire as well?
No.
That's what I thought. So everything that's existing is going to have barbed wire, but all the new fences not.
All right, and that's your testimony?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. That's really what I...
Mr. Chairman, just one last question, Curley. I know you're proposing the bio-retention basin. Can you talk a little bit about how that functions?
So due to the fact that we're increasing some impervious surfaces in the area, we needed to meet the, uh, new stormwater management regulations and provide for stormwater management on these, on this new, uh, paved area. So essentially, there's a collection system that picks up drainage from the main portion of the driveway here and brings it down to the bio-retention area and then, um, also collects water from, uh, the driveway and then into the bio-retention area through swell. Uh, the discharge goes exactly where the rainwater goes today, down adjacent to the property line and discharges overland in this area.
The bio-retention basin that was, kind of a, kind of a plant basin that has this kind of a natural function to it? That's more, I believe, my question, is that just a basin of water?
Um, one of the comments in, in the review letter was that, uh, planting needed to be added to the, to the landscaping, uh, for the bio-retention basin, and we, we will comply.
Mr. Chairman, we had a number of comments in our report about the submitted documents in the bio-retention basin, and the applicant's going to address that with revised plans in the future.
That's correct.
Is your preference to open to the public after each witness or to bring up the next witness? Okay. Then I'd like to ask Mr. Metz to please come up to address some of the questions that have been raised from an operational perspective. I just need to swear, Mr. Metz in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state and spell your name for the record?
It's John Metz, M-E-T-Z.
Okay. Mr. Metz, uh, can you describe your current and past positions with the Hercules slash Ashland plans?
Yes, I've been at the site for over 35 years and I'm currently the, the project manager for this job. So I have intimate knowledge of the, uh, operating function of what's being proposed here.
Before I ask you about the floor plans and the trash, can we first talk about those four truck parking spaces and how they will be used? And perhaps you could talk a little bit about how truck queuing occurs today?
Well, sure. Currently, the trucks come off of Cheesequake Road and we have, as Bob mentioned, a third of a mile driveway that comes onto the site. And there's some open area on that driveway that trucks, when they come in, in the middle of the night, they queue up and they stay with their vehicles there. With the redevelopment, that goes away. So to not have trucks out on a public road waiting to get into the plant on the off-hours, we're proposing to put in the four truck queuing spaces. So when they do come in at off-hours, they can back in there and they have to stay with their vehicle until the gate opens in the morning about 6 o'clock. This is, as you guys know, truckers travel on very late hours and they like to come in early and, and, and wait. And nor- normally, if you come on the site, 6:00 in the morning, you'll see a couple of trucks off the road waiting to get in. So we're providing that spot for them.
Okay. And there were questions about, first of all, the, the refuse and how that would be handled. How is the refuse from the office modular building handled today?
Currently, we have a contract with Frail Cordage and they, uh, we've got dumpsters throughout the site that they pick up. Our janitorial service picks up the trash from inside the building now and brings it into the plant and uses existing dumpsters and that will continue going forward with our proposed changes.
Right. And then there was a request for some testimony about the floor plans of the existing modular building and how those are going to be adjusted on the interior to accommodate security.
Sure.
So if we could mark exhibit, we'll call it A7, you could tell me what that is?
Yeah, this is a proposed floor plan for the, uh, modifications for the office building.
Okay. And, and what's going to be different between the use of that office building today and how the floor plan might change, um, if this application were to be approved?
Okay, currently, there's nine office, nine offices in this building and two cubicles. The major...
The opposite side has the existing condition.
Oh, it does? Okay, let's do that.
And we'll mark exhibit A8 as the existing office floor plan.
Perfect, yeah, that's what I'm looking for. All right, so this says, Bob said, this is the existing conditions, the, the existing office as it's being, as it's functioning. You've got five offices here and four offices here and two cubicles. We have an ADA bathroom here and then a conference room in the center. And this is strictly for an office facility for plant management personnel. With this project, our proposal is to make some interior modifications, creating a security office here, which is using an existing office and just bringing an outer, uh, a booth here with a window so the guard can sit in and see out the window, traffic coming in and out, and also greet people who come in to, uh, sign into the building. This office is just going to be made a little bit bigger. And then these two offices here are going away as becoming part of an expanded conference room. And then we're taking this office here and converting it to another bathroom. So there'll be less offices in here and then the function just adds our security operation, which is currently in a separate trailer unit on the entrance road. And that be, that'll be removed.
And Mr. Metz, there's one other question about what happens if an emergency vehicle needs to access the site, uh, during off-hours? How is that handled today and how will it be handled in the future?
Okay, sure. We do have an emergency plan and there's always somebody on site. And if we need to admit an emergency vehicle, we have the ability to remotely open our current gate from our main control room. That function will be retained with our changes here. We also have in our emergency plan, somebody is designated to go up to the gate on foot and, or take a vehicle up and escort emergency vehicles in. Because if an emergency vehicle comes in, they just don't know where to go. So we've got somebody designated to let them in and escort them to the, you know, to the site where, where the emergency is. And that'll, that won't change with this.
And that personnel is available 24 hours a day at the plant?
Yes.
Did that address, I think it was Mr. Fowler's question. Are there any other questions for Mr. Metz that I have not asked to him? Okay. Well, other than Mr. Curley and Mr. Metz, that was all I had. As you could see, it's, it's a relatively simple application and it's simply to align the existing plant function with the... existing plant function with the proposed new development. The waivers we're requesting are generally, again, pretty straightforward and simple and relate to just being able to use the existing lighting, making sure that we're going to have acceptable lighting at our security entrance, and the one sidewalk which really doesn't fit into the operational needs of the plant. So with that, that is all we have this evening, and we do appreciate your time.
Do you need a motion to open up the public?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody in the public wishing to speak, please come up now.
The chairman to make the motion, we close the public portion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen and ladies, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I make a motion that the application be approved with the waivers requested.
I have a second on that?
Second.
Hearing a second, are there any opposed?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Diaddio?
Yes.
Mr. Allegra?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Gennaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marr?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy holiday.
Thank you.
Business, do business, administrative matter?
So I just provided all the members on the 2022 Planning Board meeting schedule, which our first meeting, I believe, is January 5th, which would be the reorganizational meeting. Jay, do we have any applicants to be heard then?
Mr. Chairman, at the present time, you do not have any applicants scheduled for that reorganization meeting. There are a couple minor applications pending to have a change, but at the present time, nothing in form of schedule.
That's it? Motion to close?
Open up the public.
All moved.
Second motion to close.
All moved.
Second motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody have a nice holiday?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy and happy. Do you want to retain exhibits?
Yes.
I mean, sometimes they, I mean, anybody could do it. I don't know. Oh, here's, I'm saying, she didn't give me one, but she did. She's so efficient. You too. You're not up this year, right?
I look at one, you too, man. Yep. Me too.